City Council, successor agency, finance, power authority, city clerk.
This is the roll call for the council and authority. Councilmember, authority member Johnson.
Present.
Ma'am.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Crist.
Present.
Mayor Chair Paris. We have a quorum.
I need a motion to excuse.
Move to excuse Mayor Paris.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, call the housing authority.
Roll call for housing authority. Housing Authority Member Harvey. Ma'am.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Crist.
Present.
Chair Zetto. We have a quorum.
Make a motion to excuse Chair Zetto and Authority Member Cassandra Harvey.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Invocation, John Meadows, Christian Life Assembly. Welcome, John.
Let's stand and pray. Let's pray. Lord Jesus, we thank you that we can come again before you and ask for your wisdom, your direction, and your blessing. Lord, I pray that you would continue to give our city council and commissions wisdom from your throne as they seek you. Father, we know that you promised to give us the desires of our heart when we put you first, and so let us put you first in everything we do, in our interactions with others. Let your grace shine through us. Bless our city, protect those who serve us so well. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I'd be honored, thank you. Everyone, please join me. Raise the flag, right hand over your heart, and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Sandy. You wanted to speak early?
Good evening, everyone. I'm here on behalf of the Lancaster Chamber of Commerce, and really, this is just a thank you to the city of Lancaster. I've been in my position as chief operating officer for a little over three months now, and I've experienced nothing but yes, 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 can-do attitude from the city of Lancaster. We had Vern Lawson as our speaker at the chamber last month. Great presentation on economic development went over very big. We have follow-up speaking requests for Vern now. I really want to talk about the streets of Lancaster and what the staff did. I want to first of all thank our city manager, Mark Bozigian, for saying yes, that he would work with the Chamber of Commerce to put us in a great position and partner for the streets of Lancaster with our Beer Garden, which is a fundraiser for our work ethic scholarship, which I'm not sure that mixes too well. But also Rhonda Perez, working with Parks and Rec, everything that we've been doing with you, your staff has been fantastic. And Kelvin and Luis, Destination Lancaster, starting that partnership for responding to our visitors to Lancaster. You guys have been just A number one. I would like to present certificates to five particular staff members who really went above and beyond at Streets of Lancaster. That would be Jeff Campbell, Brian Whalen, Ephraim Carrera Jr., Dan Muns, and John Belcher. So, thank you very much on behalf of the Lancaster Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Cindy. Okay, we're going to recognize Dan Green for the Neighborhood Courage Award. Dan, could you come down? Sounds like me getting up in the morning. Come on. No, come on in. Come on in. Okay, Dan Green, he's a custodian at El Dorado Elementary School. While working on the job at El Dorado Elementary, Mr. Green observed a 12-year-old girl being approached by a stranger who tried to lure her into the car in alleged kidnapping. Mr. Green observed the young girl's reaction to the stranger, became concerned, and swiftly took action and came to her aid. Although the suspects fled, they left behind evidence which ultimately led to their capture and arrest. That's great. Mr. Green's quick thinking not only saved the young girl from harm, but ultimately led to the apprehension of the suspect. Would you like to say something?
No. This is his time, and we cannot be more proud of Mr. Green and for him to be part of the Lancaster School District family, and more importantly, to be a caring member of our community. Thank you very much.
I'd like to congratulate Dan for what you do, and on behalf of the Lancaster City Council, we'd like to give you a Skybox in the next season, so you and your family and who'd ever like to use it.
Maybe I do want it.
We're going to take a picture, but I'd like the deputies to come down if they wouldn't take a picture with us, so we can all get in here, take a picture. Just give him another hand. Sue, is Sue here?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you so much for having us. I have 95% of the Tapestry Commission here, and we're proud to be at your service. The city of Lancaster's Human Relations Tapestry Commission announced the beginning of the Bridge to Empowerment season this autumn. This was a new theme each month throughout the end of the year, with the goal to bring awareness to each topic by highlighting local organizations of every type, supporting and helping to advertise community activities, festivals, and celebrations, and providing resources and educational materials surrounding each topic. Why? Aren't we all doing enough? The Antelope Valley is so diverse, but it's different than most other places, including the city of Los Angeles. In our town, diversity is within each neighborhood, not clustered like in Los Angeles, the city, where, for instance, people of like cultures tend to reside in the same neighborhoods. Here, our residents and neighborhoods have African-American, Latino, Caucasian, Jewish, Christian, Muslim, and every other background on the same street in the same town, working, living, going to school, and socializing together. The season is to help our residents understand each other's beliefs and cultures and highlight ways to continue to embrace our differences. September was Cultural Diversity Month, supporting the High Holy Days with Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah. We supported the Heritage Festival, Tamale Festival, and Hispanic Heritage Kickoff Event, and we are continuing to October with the American Indian Festival last weekend and the Three Sisters Powel Grassroots Style Gathering, October 26th and 27th. We're exhausted. Which takes us to October, which is Self Esteem and Personal Security. Domestic Violence Awareness Month is this month. There will be a press conference for National Domestic Violence Awareness Day on October 16th at 10:00 a.m. in front of the Michael Antonovich Courthouse. All are invited, please wear purple. It's also National Cyber Security Awareness Month. As part of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Two Lifestyles is having a ladies' symposium, October 26th. There's a fee for this, but our own Dr. Arisha Mohammed is speaking. I wouldn't miss it if I were you. National Coming Out Day is October 9th and 10th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Antelope Valley College Library Quad. That's the kickoff for Lesbian and Gay History Month. And this is also National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, with the Lacin' Up Cancer Walk on October 5th in Tehachapi, and Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk, October 19th at 7:00 a.m. at Marie Kerr Park. Finally, but not finally, this is National Bullying Prevention Month, and we celebrate that with the Not in Our Town Proclamation Signing, the Don't Laugh at Me Bully Awareness Workshop at Barnes &amp; Noble's on Friday, October 18th, and the Youth Empowerment Safer School Summit, which is Saturday, November 2nd. We also celebrate Safe Routes to School with Walktober. The National Walk to School Day is October 9th. November is gratitude and remembrance, and December is faith and celebration. We're proud to bring this season to you with your entire community, hoping that everyone in this community understands that they have a place here, and we're glad that they're here, and we welcome them to be part of their own civic community. Tonight, as part of the Self Esteem and Personal Safety Month, and in honor of National Bullying Prevention Month and our Safe Routes to School Master Plan efforts, we're happy to have our partners, the Antelope Valley Union High School District, staff administrators and students, the Lancaster School District, staff administrators and students, West Side School District, staff administrators and students, and East Side School District. If you would each have a representative of the school districts, please come forward to join in a formal proclamation signing. And for those of you who missed it because you can't see through the five of us, our mayor is now present. After the reading of the proclamation, shall we read that? If only. Brenda, shall we stand behind them? Let's go ahead. Ms. Adams, stand behind everybody, and stand behind the tables. In reading of the proclamation, the city of Lancaster, California, whereas schools make substantial contributions to the future of America and to the development of our young people as responsible and productive citizens, and excellence in education is dependent on safe and distinguished environments, and whereas bullying has escalated to an unacceptable proportion across the globe, interfering with the emotional, social, and academic development of our youth, whereas we must safeguard schools for our children and guarantee them an environment that holds promise and security, and whereas it is critical that we acknowledge and heighten awareness about the negative effects of bullying, which may include the risk of teenage suicide, and whereas it is the personal responsibility of all citizens of the city of Lancaster to create solutions to prevent bullying, including educators, parents, business owners, civic leaders, and law enforcement personnel, and whereas the city of Lancaster wishes to continue the coalition of anti-bullying schools, this coalition will include the school districts of Antelope Valley Union High Schools, East Side Union, Lancaster, and West Side Union. Now therefore, in recognition of National Bullying Prevention Month, be it declared that the community of Lancaster, California, will designate the month of October 2013 to anti-bullying activities and stand together as a community united with unwavering resolve that when it comes to bullying, we stand by this pledge and proclaim "Not in Our Town." The city of Lancaster is also happy to proclaim Walktober, which is the day and the month in which we recognize the fitness requirements and the safety requirements to have our children walk to school. Whereas, a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and being able to walk or bicycle to school offers an opportunity to build activity into daily routine, and whereas an important role for parents and caregivers is to teach children about pedestrian safety and become aware of the difficulties and dangers that children face on their trip to school each day, and the health and environmental risks related to physical inactivity and air pollution, and whereas the Safe Routes to School Master Plan is currently in progress to improve routes for children to safely walk and bicycle in our communities, and whereas driving students to school by private vehicle contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution, children, parents, and community leaders around the world are joining together to walk to school and evaluate walking and bicycling conditions in their communities. Now therefore, be it resolved on behalf of Lancaster City Council, in recognition of National Walk to School Month, I do hereby proclaim the month of October Walktober. And at this point, we'll have a photo op and invite all school district representatives, teachers, parents, and students to join for a photo opportunity. So, pull out those iPhones and the other ones, too.
Say hi.
How are you? Good. Joe, coordinate this, make it happen. Get the children up front and the adults in back. Get the adults in the back, and the children can go up front. Yeah, we're good. Get the children up front. Get the children up front. Your face is right here for the city camera.
Everyone look right here.
Okay, here we go.
All right, right here. Everyone smile on three. All right, nice big smile. One, two, three.
Now, stay there, stay there. We got a lot of cameras. Just stay there.
One more big smile. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Okay, now, there's a couple, just quickly, of any family and friends who take a shot while they're just trying to go and take a shot. Okay, there you go. Thank you.
No, it's okay.
I didn't want you to feel like you had a bad...
Should I wait until the damn answer, or shall I tap?
The way?
Say it again? No, just a thank you, a paragraph. You want me to do it now? Okay.
Okay, let's take 10 minutes, okay? Did they hear that? Let's take 10 minutes. All right, 10-minute break. Okay, let's start. Mr. Bozigian, you're going to help me with the Streets of Lancaster? Which means you got to do it, because I wasn't there.
Well, we're going to have, if you want to stay seated, we're going to have a video promoted up here. Anybody crack? Anybody roll?
Sadly, yes. The Streets of Lancaster was an awesome time this year. So, what we're going to do is we're going to show you a video, and there's a test at the end. We're going to see who can pick out what may be the newest vehicle in the city of Lancaster fleet. Okay? We'll see who's going to get that first, and then after the video, we're going to award a couple of trophies to the Guns and Hoses winner and to the Boulevard Champ. Is the Boulevard Champ here?
Sudo.
Oh, there you are. Okay. So, first off, with no further ado, we're going to start the video.
That was Michael, and Luke did that.
Stand up, you guys. That is truly remarkable. That is professional quality stuff. Wow. I'm just really impressed. Thank you.
That's what we just said today, too. We were going to try to fool you and say Jason and I did it, but you wouldn't believe that.
That's accurate. Yeah. Okay, if we can have Monty Buckaloo come down here, please. If you want to bring your family, that's fine, too. Okay, first off, at this year's race, there were over 100 VIPs and sponsors, and to get in, it's not just who you know, it's how much you contribute to the community, not just in money, but what you contribute. Representing Carpeteria, correct, is one of our gold sponsors. The reason we can put events on like this is because of the sponsors and community, and Carpeteria stepped up, so please give Carpeteria a big hand. Mr. Buckaloo went through two races, I think, plus practices, and he came out on top over 100 VIP racers. And everyone got better this year. I mean, I know I've done it for three years, I got better, everyone got better, and he was by far the best in the field. So, we congratulate you, and we have a trophy for you.
Can we have Carpeteria up as well, too?
So, if you guys, if you want to take some pictures, family, come on up, and we'll step here to you later. Can our deputies come down?
Guns won. And what was your hint?
I don't see any firemen.
No.
We don't have any firemen, did we? That must have been humiliating for them.
The winner of the Guns and Hoses race was Deputy Justin Fisk, and I think if you had been at the race, you saw some strategy. It was clear from the outset that the Sheriff's Department was a lot better than the Fire Department. So, the Fire Department had one of two choices, be good sports and race, or decide they were going to pick on one guy who they were going to crash and make crash, and that was Lieutenant Craig. He was hit numerous times, he was a little hot when he came off the track, but then they celebrated. So, Mayor, I don't know if you or the captain would like to say any words?
No, congratulations to the team. I mean, they came out and did some practices, and it's unfortunate that the Fire Department couldn't be here to see this today.
Is there a fire out there? There really isn't, is there? This is sad. Congratulations.
You know, it looks like it's a bunch of toys out there, but it is really, really difficult. I mean, it's harder than driving a car, believe me. I'm only glad you won.
Thank you.
Okay, City Manager, anything, any items to be removed?
Uh, no, sir.
Thank you. Any speaker cards on the council minutes?
None.
Do we have a motion and a second to adopt?
Motion to approve M1.
I second.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous with one abstention? Anything to remove from the consent calendar?
No, sir. No speaker cards. Move to approve that consent calendar is currently comprised.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. New business. We'll hear staff report from Parks and Rec, Rhonda Perez.
Mike Rose is gonna cover this one for me tonight, please.
Are you sick?
Yeah, she shouldn't be here, she is sick and should not be here.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Council, each year, the City of Lancaster applies for a Lockheed Martin grant to help support our Celebrate America on the Boulevard event. This year, we were awarded $8,000, which went to exhibitions, entertainment, et cetera, at our event this year. This report recommends an appropriation of that $8,000 for this year and to increase revenue account 106-3232-100 by the same amount, $8,000. That's it.
Thank you. Any speaker cards?
None.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve NB1.
I second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. NB2? Brenda Kamla?
Kamla.
I'll practice that, okay, sorry, Brenda.
Not a problem. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I have the honor of letting you know about another grant that we received, $10,000 from the Kaiser Foundation Community Grant Project. It's for Boulevard Project Get Fit Healthy Active Lifestyles. So we're gonna be doing several things through the Parks Department, and thank you to Angela Riley and Melissa Vareya for helping with this grant and the grant application and being very successful at it. The things that we'll be doing on the Boulevard is expanding the farmer's market on Thursday nights with educational workshops and cooking demonstrations that are healthy to help to reduce obesity. And then we'll also have Boulevard-based fitness programs, including distance markers that will be throughout the street and around the surrounding park and the surrounding streets, so that you know how far you've walked, and that's open to everybody, and that'll be a great addition to the Boulevard and the downtown. We'll also, this grant will allow us to increase the number of instructors that lead the Fit Kids Program that's already in existence, and that's for 17 and under. So we're very excited about that, and then anybody who participates in those programs will get a $3 voucher to use at the farmer's market at the vendors that are participating. And they've already reached out to several of the vendors, and they're very receptive, so we're looking forward to that. We also are using, working with AVPH for working with the Boulevard businesses, the restaurants, to identify what the healthy options are in each restaurant, and then we're working on a program to have little stickers that would be identifying all those businesses that have healthy options. In addition to that, we will have surveys that are given out to the patrons at the farmer's market, so that we can find out how they feel about the activities that are present in the downtown area for health. And then we'll get feedback, and we'll hopefully be able to expand further and get more grants that way, hopefully. In addition, we are working with Antelope Valley Partners for Health to expand those options. They're very anxious to continue being our partners for this, so we, Angela and I, are actually going to be meeting tomorrow. I wish we could have brought more information tonight to you, but tomorrow, we'll be talking about many different options of promoting healthy activities in the downtown area and around, to bring people down here, walking, riding, and then also to choose the right healthy options at restaurants and at the farmer's market. So I'd also like to, I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you so much to Amy Weiss, she's our Kaiser Senior Community Benefit Health Specialist for the area. She keeps bringing these opportunities to our attention and helping us through the process, and she's just phenomenal in helping us. So she's been with us with the Heal Zone Grant, which we've brought to you a couple of times, that is also in conjunction with this project and with the school districts to bring healthy options, some gardens too, like Mariposa, and many other things. So we're very thankful to have them as partners, as well as AVPH, and thank you again to Parks Department for doing this. Any questions? Thank you.
No speaker cards? Zero, thank you, Rhonda. Move to approve NB2?
I second.
Brenda, I'm sorry, Rhonda, Brenda, I'm old, sorry. Let's vote. It's unanimous. It's really easy to vote to take people's money, I just...
Mark, speaking of taking people's money, it was brought to my attention that the county of Los Angeles has for senior citizens vouchers for the farmer's market. Do we know anything about that?
Uh, yeah, we work with a couple of people on that, and they'll have to get you a better report on that, and I know we looked at that once, there was an impediment to it, and it's just not coming to me now, but we can get that back to you in the information.
Okay.
We're trying to still access that.
Can we work on that?
Yeah, we are working on it, we're trying to access, I'll get you a better report.
Okay, thank you.
Wow, today is a great meeting, it's all pluses. Now we get the Youth Commission, right? Come on up. And... Rhonda, don't you breathe on those kids.
Mayor Paris and council members, it's my privilege to introduce Melissa Varela, I'm sorry. She actually coordinates our Youth Commission, it began in 1992, and it's a way for our local youth to get involved in the, in city government, have a voice, share their concerns with us from their perspective, and we're really, really proud of this program. So tonight, Melissa will introduce each of them to you for nomination and appointment.
Okay, thank you very much for having us here tonight. As Rhonda mentioned, this is our 21st year of doing the Lancaster Youth Commission, and tonight, I have seven individuals who are bright, energetic, and enthusiastic about participating in our Youth Commission this year.
People are looking at me like I'm supposed to do something. What? NB3.
Mayor Paris, would you join us for their nomination and appointment?
Sure, yeah, I'll approve, or...
We need a motion and approval.
I'll have to nominate. All right, I'll, uh, I'll nominate the, I don't have to go through all their names, right? The candidates, and I need a motion to appoint and a second. So moved.
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Rhonda, go ahead and vote. It's unanimous. We're gonna have to start having rehearsals, guys. Okay.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States...
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies, wars, and domestic...
Against all enemies, wars, and domestic...
Where are true dates and truths...
Where are true dates and truths...
To the Constitution of the United States...
To the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Take this obligation freely without any mental reservation...
Take this obligation freely without mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion...
You will pay for the charges and duties and the rewards that we intend to pursue upon which you are about to enter.
On which you are about to enter.
Congratulations.
So you guys know what you're gonna do?
We have some ideas.
Better be a world change. The last idea was world change.
We hope to provide children with more literature to broaden their knowledge, and another idea is to provide the homeless with jackets for winter. Yes. Many people have jackets they don't use anymore, they're either worn out, they don't fit, so if there's a way, we can accumulate all those in one general area and then distribute them.
I got about 10. Because I'll travel, you know, and for Lancaster, it's warm, it's hot. Bring my coat. Five degrees. Gotta go buy a coat. You know about that? That one for China. Seriously, it's about 10. That's great. So how many do you think are you? Be more than 10.
Yes.
All right, I'm anxious to see you. Excited.
Creek Rodwater from Lancaster Baptist High School?
I should have known that.
Next, we have Alex Canrato for Sore High School?
No offense.
Jenny Darring for Sore High School?
Oh. Next, we have Dolly Gonzalez from Gaye High School? Kaylee Hernandez from Garret High School? Ryan McCormick from Lancaster High School? And Jeffrey Rosales from...
What'd she say? He cites my second best. You know why he cites my second best? State of the art. See, her appearance really do lucky. You were eating my peanuts?
Thank you for sharing.
That was my dinner. Okay. No action on the Financing Authority, no action on the Housing Authority, no action on the Power Authority, no action on the Successor Agency. City Manager, any announcements?
Uh, yes, I do, we've had a very busy couple of weeks, so we're gonna show you three about minute and a half videos each on three of the events we've had. I think they'll tell the story the best, so I'll talk about the first one, then we'll show it, and then we'll briefly do the second one while we're queuing it up. But before I do that, I wanna remind folks that we do have the Field of Drafts coming up November 9th. Tickets are selling out very quickly, so if you don't get them in the next couple of weeks, you're unlikely to have them. Also, Mayor and council members, there is unlikely to be a video on this event, so you just have to...
I'm glad to hear that.
Yes.
Are they selling tickets at the local AA meetings, or? I mean, they didn't announce it when I was there, I was just...
I don't think so. We've tried, we've tried to do all the restaurants.
They're really doing a beer fest, right?
Yes, we are. Proudly and gladly. Thank you, Mr. Man.
Safe.
I've never liked that voting thing, you know?
The first video you're gonna see is regarding the job fair that we had in September. I thank the support of Mayor Paris and the council for putting this on, because a lot of cities would have just sat back, and I think from seeing this, you'll see that we can be very, very proud of our city and what our staff and our council have done to help people connect with other employers that have jobs. So the first one, please roll. This is about a community coming together, this is about people offering jobs, this is about people looking for jobs, and we have a great community, both inclusive of Palmdale, Lancaster, the entire community, and when you can come together like this and support the community, and give and get jobs, it's a great thing. We believe in talking with people, we believe in communicating with people, BYD is a great example of that, Morton Manufacturing is a great example of that. When we talk to people, they get excited about coming to Lancaster, coming to the Antelope Valley, and that's what we're all about. I think it's getting better, I think the economy's getting better, I think that we're going to make it work. We have a lot of things in the fire, we can't announce them right now, but we have a lot of things in the fire, and unemployment is going down.